Madam Chair, the floor is yours.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Tony Gonzalez calling together the Planning Board meeting for Tuesday, February 6th. Little statement. This meeting is being recorded and allows for real-time public participation. Comments can be addressed to the Planning Board utilizing the Zoom virtual meeting software for remote access. This application allows users to view the meeting and send a comment or question to the chair via the question and answer function. Submissive text comments will be read into the record. For those of you joining by phone, press star nine. Want to ask a question, please raise your hand. A copy of this recording will be on the city's webpages. All votes will be done via roll call to ensure account accuracy. So we will start with roll call. Larry Hassan.
Here.
Ilan Spanola.
Here.
James Sweeney.
Here.
Marty Crowe. You're on mute. Just unmute Marty. Marty, can you unmute? You've got to go over to the little red microphone on the bottom left. There you go.
All right, up here.
Present. Okay, Tony Gonzalez present. All right, a review of the agenda. We have a couple A and Rs. We have a return to ZBA for 30 Interval Street. We have amended approval for property 142 Main Street. Preliminary subdivision for Quincy Street Mia Meadows. We have a site plan review for 56 Cherry Street. And if anyone is here for 1315 Main Street Teen Challenge, this has been continued to next month. Again, we will not be hearing 1315 Main Street tonight. Okay, excuse me. First, can I get a motion to accept the meeting minutes for last month?
Motion to accept last month's minutes.
Second.
Second.
Thanks. Roll call, Larry Hassan.
Yes.
Melondo.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Marty.
Yes.
Only yes. Thanks. Okay. Evan. The A and Rs.
A and Rs, all right. First one we have is 2224 Emmett Street. There are two buildings on the lot that predate zoning. And they're just splitting those into two, basically. So because the building's predate zoning, they are not, they don't have to adhere to the zoning acts, therefore it's an A and R.
Right, so a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, roll call, Larry.
Yes.
Melondo.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Marty.
Yes.
Tony, yes.
All right, and second A and R is the Westgate Mall. They are just taking their big, single piece of land that the mall and everything around it sits on, and splitting off a bunch of the outlined buildings and different, just different portions of it into separate parcels. I guess for financing or perhaps maybe to sell them off, but everything, it's a commercial zone. They don't have frontage requirements. It's, everything's fine. It's A and R, no problem.
Oh, no approve.
Interesting.
Second.
All right, roll call, Larry.
Yes.
Melondo.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Marty.
Yes.
Tony, yes. So they, the department will let us know when we need to come in and sign board members for these A and Rs.
That's right.
All right. No lot releases, surety extensions, okay. Getting right into it, return to ZBA 30 Interval Street, applicant armed construction LLC.
Oops. So anybody that's, yes, please raise your hand if you are part of this case.
Who's representing?
Okay, there we are. Okay. I was clicking on the wrong button. This is Attorney John McCluskey representing the applicant, Rob Nakashian, who is the treasurer and CEO of Community and Housing, Inc., which is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit educational entity in Massachusetts. They own the property at 30 Intervale Street in Brockton, and were recently before the Board of Appeals seeking relief from parking. Just by way of background, this property is a derelict property in Brockton. Used to be a bar. I can't remember the name of it, and I don't know if I was ever in it. I don't think I was. Maybe Larry, I could, maybe Larry, Larry might have been in. In any event, it's a, it's a derelict property. And we're, so being a 501(c)(3) nonprofit educational institution, we're entitled to the Dover Amendment relief for zoning. In addition to that, we've partnered with Father Bills, which I also represent, which wants to put into this property a 28-unit permanent residential facility with educational background. Basically, what would happen would be that these would be single-person studio apartments wherein the residents would be previously homeless, would be receiving educational input from Father Bills to get them back up into the community, getting jobs, getting housing, getting it back acclimated with, with life as they should be, and integrating them into the community. This has been a very successful program, which you've probably seen over at Roadway, which is the old Carton House Hotel. If you drive by there, you'll see it's, it's now a, a single unit. I don't know how many units they have over there, but that's what they do. They educate these folks. They have classes every day. They have intervention issues, you know, with regard to helping them just acclimate into the community. So under, under that program and under the so-called Dover Amendment, we're exempt from certain zoning regulations. However, we need to apply certain things such as parking, height restrictions, and things like that. So a few years ago, the owner of this property came before the Board of Appeals seeking, I think it was a 15- or 20-unit residential community, just market-based apartment building. That didn't go off the ground because apparently they realized that they needed to have more units. So I think they increased the units to more than, more than 15 or 20 units. And we're again granted a variance because this is in a C2 zone. And residential units are not applicable in this area. So that didn't fly either. So then along comes Father Bills and Rising Community, Rob Nakashian. And they said this would be a great spot for our integrating people back into the community. And as opposed to the number of units that were allowed just before, year before, they wanted to put 32 units and, and receive the zoning board approval. What they were seeking at the time was not the number of units, because that's allowed by right under the Dover Amendment, but we're seeking a reduction in parking. And Mr. Sweeney raised the question at the zoning board level that what happens if Father Bills doesn't come into this place? So the Board of Appeals decided, and I'm not questioning their, their decision. The Board of Appeals decided that because we were only looking for, we were looking for 32 units and 28 parking spaces, that that probably, possibly could not be enough to make it work if Father Bills didn't go into this place. So as opposed to appealing the decision to the, to the courts, Mr. Nakashian and Rising Community said, let's try to work with the city to make this work. So they reduced the number of units to 28 units. And we have 28 parking spaces on site. And now even if perchance, and I, I'm honestly very confident that Father Bills is going to go into this, this facility. Even if perchance, they did not have that Dover Amendment use. We'd still have enough parking space because each and every one of those, the units is a studio apartment, one person. So we've got one person for each, each parking space. And in the, in the, in this type of use, as you, you might see, if you, if you drive by the, the, the roadway property on Belmont Street, you look at that parking lot and there are no cars. There are maybe cars for three or four employees. And often you'll see the residents of Roadway walking down to the bus stop and walking over the highway to go to Cumberland Farms. But they just don't drive. 10%, typically 10% of the residents of these places drive, have cars, can afford to drive, can be allowed by law to drive. Most of them can't even be allowed by law to drive. So what we're looking to do is to go back to the zoning board of appeals because we've reduced the number of units from 28, from, I'm sorry, from 32 to 28. We've increased the parking under the, under the building. And the hardship questions don't apply here because of, of the Dover Amendment. And, and I honestly think this is going to be a very good use for a derelict property that's been allowed by the Board of Appeals before to have that transition from commercial to residential. And I honestly think that this is going to be a great use for the property. So we clearly have shown a substantial change in the, in the footprint of the property. We've shown two clearly different changes to the parking and to the number of units. I think this is a classic case where we should be able to go back. And I just a little bit reluctantly say that under the Dover Amendment laws and cases, the Boards of Appeals and the Planning Board has to make reasonable, by law, has to make reasonable accommodation to these type of requests.
Thank you, Attorney McCluskey. I actually might have a question. I don't know, Jim, if you can answer this, but would it not have been appropriate to make a condition that if they were using the Dover Amendment, a condition would be it would have to be Father Bills going into this property?
I'm not sure if that was brought up, but to put a condition on that, basically the Board or the Chairman, I don't think he would favor something like that.
So I get the Dover Amendment, and then I also understand, you know, what our vote here tonight is to return to ZBA, and we can only do that if the soil condition changed, the lot changed, lot shape changed, or land to topography. But I don't see, I didn't hear any of that. Any questions from other board members?
Yeah, I've got a question. As far as this Dover Amendment is concerned, why, I mean, if you're exempt from that, why are you even here? Or why would you even need permission?
Because you denied us.
But if you're, but certainly.
So Jim, Mr. Sweeney, we're looking for, when we were before the Board of Appeals, we were looking for a reduction in parking. So in that district, we would need, I don't know what the numbers, but we, we need more parking. So when we were before the Board of Appeals, and, and you raised the question, what if we don't come in? And the answer was, we ended up being denied. So we have to go through the process. We have to go back to the Board of Appeals to ask for.
But didn't you just say that you're exempt from that, from that usage and from, you did say that, correct?
Yeah, we're, we're exempt from the use, but we're not exempt from dimensional aspects such as parking and height and all that stuff. So that's why we're here.
Gotcha.
Yeah. We good with that?
Yeah, but I'm, I'm confused though.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Larry.
Maybe, I don't know if there's anybody else on here with Attorney McCluskey, they can explain, you know, some of the issues with, I mean, I'm pretty sure Attorney McCluskey had mentioned that they're looking to change some of the criteria for the parking and all that. Can maybe somebody else give us a little guidance on that?
Well, but speaking to the.
Or if Attorney McCluskey wants to mention it, that's fine, too.
Yeah, let me, let me comment first that in, in these, in these types of units where you've got one person in each unit, you're not going to need more than one car if everybody's driving. Now normally, I think you need a, gonna, gonna need a couple of cars per unit. That's why we needed relief from the parking restrictions, and that's the only thing we were looking for. So really what we've got here is we've, we've demonstrated, I think, a substantial change in the in the, in the parking and in the number of residential units. So that this should by right allow us to go back to the Board of Appeals to address the issue that Mr. Sweeney raised at the Board of Appeals as to the number of parking units.
So did the change in parking, it did, it would have to change the lot shape? And I don't think that that parking did that either, correct? Or can someone else speak to that? We, we could, we need to find one of these.
We changed the number of units from 32 to 28. That's in and of itself a substantial change.
But the criteria is soil condition, lot shape, or land topography. Keep chopping that up, but land topograph, topography. Sorry, tongue twister, but you're, the changing of parking spaces and changing around units is not meeting the criteria for those.
Oh, yes, it is. Oh, absolutely. I, I.
Showing the lot that the lot shape changed, I'm thinking maybe lot shape, you're, because you're not changing.
Oh, 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 hold on a second. You're not the Board of Appeals.
No.
You're the Planning Board.
Correct. We know this. Thank you. We know this, but thank you.
You have one issue. It's not hardship. It's not topography. It's not lot shape. It's whether or not there's a substantial change. We went from 32 units to 28 units, and we increased the parking. We meet the substantial change. And, and under the Dover Amendment, you have the obligation to make reasonable accommodation to these types of requests for a 501 non, 501(c)(3) nonprofit educational organization. And if you don't do that, the court's going to tell you to do that.
No, it's a substantial difference. Okay, Rob, can you please explain the criteria to return to ZBA? And tell me, tell us if parking, changing units. And I'm not trying to be difficult. I'm just trying to go by what the guidelines are here, Attorney McCluster. So, Rob, please, can you clarify that for the board to make sure that we are not misunderstanding anything in case this goes to court?
Okay, so there's, there's two different things going on here. If I understand this correctly. One is that the Board needs to make a finding that the applicant has made a substantive change to their application to allow, or, or, or to go back to the zoning board of appeals. And in this case, the applicant has, you know, changed the number of units, reduced their parking requirements, and a couple of other things that, that Attorney McCluskey has discussed. However, and this is what's always tripped us up and has been difficult for the, the planning board and zoning board is in their finding, a determination to deny the application before the zoning board of appeals, the, the Board found that there was no standing to grant a variance because there was no hardship due to the shape of the lot, the topography or soil conditions. Now, it's easy for the Board to go, the planning Board to say, you know, the first half, yes, he has made a substantive change. The second half is, is really much more difficult because the, of the language that they used. Typically, we have argued the point, but we've never really, you know, stood on a head, on our head about it. As to whether or not they have a, so substantial change for their right to apply for variance. So what we've normally done is let the zoning board of appeals make that decision.
Right.
But we need to continue to work with the zoning board of appeals to make sure that they don't list that as a, as a criteria because it, it screws up our process. Because if that's what's really holding this up is that they don't have those three issues, then it's hard for us to say you've made a substantial change, substantive change.
I'm not quite understanding that. It's, I think it's pretty clear that this is substantial change.
Oh, I agree, there is.
Yeah, and that's the criteria. It's not a, you, you can't, you can't superimpose zoning board criteria in your hearing. You can't say it's, we need to show hardship. We can't, you can't say that we need to show unusual shape soil. It just doesn't apply. And in the Dover Amendment case, which is even more important, the law says that you have to make reasonable accommodations so that, you know, quite frankly, I, I, I said to my client, Rob Nakashian, I said, we could appeal this thing, but it's going to be two years. And.
Waste of money, waste of time.
So we.
Marty, do you want to mute yourself? Thanks.
I'm sorry?
I was just having a board member mute there. Thank you. Go ahead.
We, we, we could have appealed at the court, but, but court cases take a couple of years. So we made a substantial change in the, in the plan. We're entitled by right to go back to the Board of Appeals. And you have to make, under the Dover Amendment, you have to make reasonable accommodations. I just went through this in the town of Stoughton. And the planning board wanted to deny us on a, on a Father Bills case. I had to remind them that 10 years before, the planning board did the exact same thing. They wanted to deny us in Stoughton. And we went to the Superior Court, and the Superior Court says you have to make reasonable accommodations to a Dover Amendment-type case. And clearly, in this case, we've, we've made substantial changes to the plan. There's undoubtedly, I mean, it just isn't, it's, you know, you can spend your money wasting time in court, but simple thing is, let us go back to the Board of Appeals and let, let them take a look at it again because it's going to answer Mr. Sweeney's case question as to whether we have enough parking, which we now do, and we've reduced the size of the, of the units. It clearly answers the Board of Appeals. You know, they, the Board of Appeals in their decisions often have sort of boilerplate language, didn't meet hardship and blah, blah, blah. Doesn't apply in this case. It just does not apply. And I'm telling you, I'm, I'm not trying to be confrontational here. I'm just telling you what the law is.
Madam Chairwoman.
You have to let us go back.
Yes, Marty.
Going to say, let them figure it out. Let them go back.
I dealt with this on the City Council. Attorney McCluskey is absolutely right. We have no reason to deny them to go back to the ZBA. It's up to the ZBA to decide. There's, there's a substantial change here, and according to what I understand, that's our only purview. That's the only thing we are responsible for.
That, that's where I'm getting stumped because I would, I'm informed that there's the part two of it, where you have to meet the three criterias. So we got the first part of it, but we don't have the second part of it.
You don't.
Um. Yeah, we do. They do.
You're wrong.
Where's the lot shape changed? Where's the soil change? The topography change? Where is it?
Are you the zoning board of appeals? You're not the zoning board of appeals.
Oh, I understand that, but I've been informed that when we returned to the ZBA.
You don't have two questions to answer. You have one question to answer. Is there a substantial change? And Ms. Crowe is correct. I'm right. There is no second part of this. It's, is a substantial change, and if you say that there's another piece of it, you have a problem.
One package, it's one package. There's a, there's pieces to a package, so it's one.
There's one piece to this package. Is there a substantial change? You know, you can give me that look, but I'm telling you, I'm right.
No, because we're just, we're just talking circles. I'm not going to do that any, any further. Is there, are there any other questions from the board members?
Not for me, no.
Is this, um, is this open to public or no?
Whoops, I'm sorry. I'm on the wrong page. Anyone who would like to address this issue? At this public hearing, please use the raise your hand icon at the bottom of your screen. When we see that icon light up, we will unlock your microphone and allow you to speak. And Madam Chair, I do not have anyone indicating that they would like to speak.
Okay, is there a motion?
Motion to approve in the hopes that it fails.
That's, I can't second that. I'm sorry, sorry.
Is there a second?
That's the motion with the hopes that it fails? Kind of motion is that?
That's my motion.
Wow.
That would be a denial. Is there a second? Okay.
I make a motion. Yeah, that I move forward and the hopes that it passes.
And I second that.
Okay, roll call, Larry Hassan.
Yes.
Ilan Spanola.
Yes.
James Sweeney.
No.
Marty Crowe.
Yes.
Tony Gonzalez, no. Okay, sorry, gentlemen.
What do we need here? Majority, simple majority.
And you got it.
Yes.
So it passes.
You need, you need four.
Need four out of, four out of.
Four to five, so it failed.
That's unbelievable. You really ought to be ashamed of yourselves.
Um, excuse me, please save those comments. And just a correction, I voted against this, so it's three yeses and two noes. Just to correct the notes. Okay. All right, next we have amended approval for 142 Main Street, applicant 142 Main Street, Main Historic LLC.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm trying to double task and I'm not doing it.
Um, we have one coming over now. If anyone else is here for this case, feel free to raise your hand and we'll move you over.
Matt, I'm moving Matt over.
Hey, everyone. Thank you for taking the time. Um, can I am I allowed to share my screen?
Oh, please do.
What we're asking for. All right. You could just let me know when you could see this, that'd be great. Uh, can everyone's okay, great. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to meet. And I also have with me Matt Snell, um, our attorney, uh, in case any other questions come up. Uh, my name is Dave Tregworth and we were first in front of the planning board in twenty twenty-two. For one forty-two Maine in downtown uh and wanted to come back for an amendment. As we continue to make good progress on this project, um, I think for those of you who may remember this. Uh, project and what we're up to, uh, it's right here, right next to City Hall. Uh, at the top of the page, right, one forty-two Maine, uh, near the corner of school and Main Street. Just, this is uh who we are, um, and. We have a lot of multifamily experience in gateway cities, um, all across Chelsea, uh. Reading, Worcester, um, and lots of retail experience as well. This is. As many of you probably know, the home of Elvera's Cafe, um, and been working with Sandra a long time. As we continue to think about how to make her space even better. In this building when when we do the renovations. Um, we've done a lot of historic and adaptive reuse, um, all over the state. Um, in Williamstown, Chelsea, as I said, we've done some ground up new construction in Hamilton. In Reading, this is a project we completed about two years ago. Our most recent project was completed in Chelsea. Uh, new ground up development and our goal for one forty-two Maine has always been and continues to be. Uh, to revitalize this iconic building, uh, which some may remember is the Kennedy Clothing Building. Um, and much of the historic detailing is still intact inside, which is amazing, and we can't wait to bring it back to life. So the project summary, as it stands today, um, it's gonna be a twenty million dollar investment, up from fourteen million. Costs have certainly increased in the time since we were last here. We still have thirty-nine parking spaces, of which thirty-four will be in a nearby. Uh, Brockton Parking Authority, uh, deck, five in the back. Um, we have about twenty-five hundred square feet of residential amenity space. Um, thirty rental apartments, thirty-two hundred square feet of retail and about forty-five thousand gross square feet across the building. So tonight, we're asking for a minor modification. Um, of our prior approval uh from twenty twenty-two. Uh, we're reducing the unit count from thirty-two to thirty. Um, without any changes in the building dimension, so from thirty-two units to thirty. Um, we're reducing um some of the affordability from eighty percent AMI to sixty percent. I'll get into the some of the changes in a minute. Um, and we're increasing the number of affordable units from sixteen to twenty. Um, we're also. Uh, asking for a waiver uh pursuant to section twenty-seven one oh one. Um, which says that basically a mixed-use development needs at least seventy percent of retail restaurant on the ground floor. We haven't made any changes to our plans on the ground floor, but we're picking up this just to make sure that we we uh capture it. Um, again, no changes have been made since the twenty-two plans, twenty-two plans to the ground floor, but we want to make sure this is. Um, captured in our approvals. What's happening since twenty twenty-two? Mostly, the timeline on these projects, as you may know, is dictated by the state historic tax credit program, which takes a very long time. Um, we've now secured about eight hundred thousand in state historic tax credits. We've secured about three million in federal historic tax credits. We've gotten two hundred fifty thousand dollars from the Brockton Redevelopment Authority. Which is required for our state application, um, and they've been great to work with. Um, we've been working with Elvera's to remain open, um, and operational. Sandra's been taking care of the building and and doing a great job. Um, uh, with that, and we've been supporting local events and keeping the property safe and secure and. We're starting the Corbal repairs uh later this week, um, and we also have a bunch of asbestos abatement. That needs to happen. Um, I think there was probably a renovation in the fifties or sixties that. Where they just basically used asbestos everywhere, uh, so we're looking forward to getting rid of that. Um, and then we're submitting our funding application to the state next month. Um, or actually next week, um, I should say. And um, we're continuing to work with everybody in the neighborhood on the historic district, which is a key to sort of unlocking a lot of resources. So we've brought in a lot of federal and state resources to the project, which are are necessary, given the construction costs. Um, that we see on these types of projects. So the size changes, uh, the previous approval, you see one bedrooms, we had fourteen one bedrooms. Now we have sixteen one bedrooms. Previously, we had eighteen two bedrooms. Now we have twelve two bedrooms. And previously, we had no three bedrooms, and now we have two. And overall, that's a reduction in unit count from thirty-two to thirty. On the for on the affordability change. Previously, we had uh fourteen units at sixty percent AMI. Now we have twenty. Uh, previously, we had sixteen at eighty percent AMI, and now we have zero. And previously, we had sixteen market rate units. Now we have ten. Uh, so that's the change there. And then on the ground floor commercial, again, we did not change this. Um, except for a few tweaks, uh, that I'm happy to show you if you'd like. But overall, we want to make it clear that the retail space is going to be this shaded area. Uh, which is about forty percent of the space. The rest of the space is being used for a residential lobby, mailroom, tra- internal trash. Uh, where uh the the city really wanted us to keep it. Um, and then we also uh have one unit down here in the back, um, exiting out into the into the rear of the building. Uh, which again, it's been there from the beginning. Um, and so I'm gonna stop there. I do have have burn afters of every. Um, uh, plan and uh if you'd like to see that, but um, I'll only reference that if if you'd like me to go there. So with that, I appreciate the.
Thank you for the update and the the details. I think it's pretty clear, reducing the units by two. Um, any questions from the board members? Okay, is this open for public?
Yes, ladies and gentlemen, uh, if anyone would like to make a comment on this, please use the raise your hand icon at the bottom of your screen. Uh, and I will unlock your microphones. And. Madam Chair, I do not see anyone who has used the raise your hand icon.
All right, thank you. Is there a motion?
Uh, Madam Chair, before we before we do motion, uh, when when would this project get started if, you know, with this approval? Do you have any idea of start date and that kind of stuff?
Yeah, um, so we will be applying next week to the state. Um, if they usually will get back to us, I would say towards the end of June with funding. Um, and then normally we could close if we get all the funding that were required, that we're asking for, which we. Knock on wood, would hope for, um, we would close within six months. Um, so. I would hope towards the end of this year, uh, that we can get going. We are. Desperate to start, um, and that's why we were able to secure some funding to get a get a start uh on some of this early work.
Uh, thank you. Motion to approve standard conditions.
Second. Okay, roll call. Larry?
Yes.
Yolanda?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Tony, yes. All right. Okay, next we have a preliminary preliminary subdivision, Quincy Street, Mia Meadows, J K Hongren, Engineering, is that Scott?
God is coming over.
I don't know if Dave was still there. I was gonna ask if he could send me an email, send us a copy of that. I don't think we got those on. I'll I'll reach out to him. I apologize. Yeah.
I'm just pretty much now, I'm still on. Um, what would you like a copy of?
Of that of that presentation, Matt, um, we never got a copy of the slides. It would be great if you could.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Bye.
All right, good evening, Scott.
Good evening, Madam Chair, uh, planning board members. Good evening, Scott Farrier from Home Green Engineering. Uh, along with Attorney James Burke, who's also uh up as a panelist. Uh, Attorney Burke and I are representing Charlie Macy from C L M Development. Uh, who is hoping to develop a subdivision, residential subdivision, eighteen lots off of Quincy Street. Uh, we would be coming in. With two separate roadways, uh, one roadway off of Quincy between houses ninety-six and one oh six. And I'm gonna share my screen if I may, Madam Chair. Uh, so the first roadway, uh, that my cursor is over between ninety-six and one oh six Quincy Street. Uh, would be called Austin Court. We have seven residential lots off of Boston Court. Uh, just to familiarize yourself with the location, the the Baker School is almost directly across the street. The Ball Field is almost directly across the street from our roadway entrance. Uh, so we'd have seven lots off of Austin Court between ninety-six and one oh six Quincy. The remaining eleven lots would be an extension of Debbie Road. Uh, which would give us eleven lots towards the back of the property. So we have a preliminary subdivision before you, which would allow us to go to the ZBA. Uh, and make a filing for a request for reduction in lot size. I guess just to to get a little deeper in into the history of the project, Madam Chair, there was a an approved subdivision way back in the seventies. Uh, that created uh a whole bunch of lots, about thirty lots. Two roadways that went in off of Quincy Street, all the way to the back of the property. Uh, that road was obviously never built. Those lots were uh were never sold off. And in the meantime, uh, since that early seventies approval, we've, uh. The state has enacted the Wetlands Protection Act, uh, subdivision control law, uh, both of which make that nineteen seventies approval. Uh, null and void. We have a uh two wetland systems that go right through the middle of the property, Madam Chair. Uh, one of them pretty much right in the middle and one in the back. Uh, the wetland system in the middle prevents us from having a roadway looping system off of Quincy Street. And it pretty much forces us to divide the property into uh essentially two projects. Uh, the Austin Court and the Debbie Road layout. Uh, as I said, it's a preliminary plan. Uh, we have wetlands uh that we have to deal with. We would certainly have a conservation filing. Uh, we're required to meet stormwater management and uh and drainage requirements to ensure that we're not impacting any of the abutting properties. And uh, we would have that as part of our procedure, as well as coming back before you folks with a definitive subdivision to. Discuss uh the roadway layout, any potential waivers, uh, things like that in in the future, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you, Scott.
All right, um, Madam Chairwoman, if I can, Jim Burke.
Hello, good evening.
Uh, great, good good to see you. Uh, uh, this is a unique piece of property, uh. The size uh in in this section of Brockton uh creates a great deal of opportunities. Uh, Charlie Macy is the developer. Uh, he does good work uh in everything he does. And uh, he does his own work and we uh at the very beginning took the uh uh Bertorelli plans of from nineteen seventy-two. Uh, we we saw that we could not function with the utilization of that, however. Uh, it it is an existing plan that uh we're we're basically filing a preliminary, but uh. Uh, clearly, it's it's akin to seeking a modification of an existing subdivision. We sat down with the planning board at length. Uh, Rob was very great uh in in providing and having uh some suggestions. And we've had numerous visits uh with the ward counselor, uh, who who likes the project. We've also circulated this in other uh uh parts of the city of Brockton, uh, in terms of the the permitting requirements. It's it's important to note that we had an original plan and we've substantially reduced that plan. Based on the uh comments that we've received from members of the the city. Charlie is here and he's online and he can give you the statistics. But i- it's it's an incredible, uh, the the size of these lots. As compared to the entire scope of the surrounding area. Uh, the the these are substantially larger lots, uh, uh, not even close, uh, than all of the. Uh, properties around it. Uh, they give you enough area to put a a a good fair house without without crowding. Uh, that's something that Charlie has learned how to do. Uh, and I think it's going to be an exceptional opportunity. A- a- and as. Uh, Scott mentioned, it's it's also unique in terms of uh the the zoning of the issue. Because if you look at this specific areas, there's virtually no wetlands in the entire area, except for. Uh, the central core of this specific property. Uh, and that over over time was created by, uh, uh, you know, uh, improper runoff from from other areas. The net effect is now the construction is more expensive because we need two separate lots. Uh, and I think the plan that we created is uh, uh, it's uh, I I I think attractive. Uh, and I think it's very, very appealing, uh, and I I believe the ward counselor agrees with us. But we are gonna follow through uh and have uh substantial public meetings uh with his constituency. Just so that everybody understands with great transparency, uh, what's being proposed. And uh, you know, I don't know if Charlie's on board, but it might be worth hearing from him. Uh, uh, because he spent the work in 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 terms of doing the statistical analysis of this subdivision. Uh, as it relates to the surrounding area.
If he's on and and wants to make it brief, because we've received a lot of information and it's April and Mary, so.
Yep, yep, and thank you for taking the time.
Uh, there there was a question if the lot one still exists, the public, public uh public right of way.
Yeah, yeah, a- actually, that's interesting. Uh, uh, there is no public right of way. Uh, I and and. Uh, thi- this is a uh, uh, part of the 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 subdivision and and. No road was ever created, uh, no uh, a budding homeowner ever acquired any rights. Uh, and it always is part of the land, uh, that is owned by the uh, uh, original developer. Uh, Bertorelli and now is being sold to us. That was raised and we we sat down with uh John O'Donnell in the Sessions Office and he did a review and it's clear that there is no. There there is no stub creating a right of way uh over the the property. Uh, tha- that just is a uh, a scribness error, uh, somewhere along the line. It wound up showing up, but in fact, uh, it doesn't exist legally. Uh, there is there is no one with any rights. To that section of the property, which is lot one, other than the current owners and hopefully, uh, Mr. Macy.
All right, that makes sense. It says potential, so that explains that. Uh, questions from other board members?
Yeah, I guess my question would be, um, usually when you have lots the size that are left in a an established city, there's ledge. Is there a significant amount of ledge on this property?
I I I I think Charlie is is so weather beaten with the ledge he's had on Cypress and Amelia. That he's praying there isn't, but uh, y- you're you're right. It's. Uh, there is a good op- good opportunity uh for him to find ledge as part of the development. We haven't gone that deep in in terms of the core. Uh, but uh, we we probably will prior to the zoning, uh, Mr. Sweeney.
Yeah, just curious, um. So I I do like the project, but it would be something that certainly the neighbors would be um wanting wanting to know about.
Yeah, there there's there's a lot of boulder outcrops uh throughout the property and uh especially in through the wetland area. Uh, there's a lot of of rocks that might lead you to think there's something under under the ground there.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you.
Other questions from board members?
Madam Chairwoman?
Yes.
Attorney Burke, I'm just happy to hear that you're gonna meet with the neighbors. That always makes always makes life a little easier.
Yeah, no question, yes.
All right, Larry? Anything, Yolanda? Okay, it's not open for public?
Ladies and gentlemen, those of you who wish to comment on this preliminary subdivision, please use the raise your hand icon at the bottom of your screen, and I will unlock your microphones. And Madam Chair, at this time, I do not see anyone using the raise your hand icon.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve with standard conditions.
Okay, roll call. Larry?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Yolanda?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Tony? Yes. All right.
Thank the board for its time.
Okay. Next up, fifty-six Cherry Street. And we have Scott, J K Holmgren Engineering.
Thank you again, Madam Chair. Again, I'm along with Attorney Burke. I'm gonna be quicker this time than I was last time, Madam Chair. Attorney Burke and I are representing Joseph and Willie Stadleman at their property at fifty-six Cherry Street. I'm hoping I have good luck with this one. Give me a second, if you would, Madam Chair.
You're a pro now, Scott.
There's a there's a lot of pressure. All right, share screen. There we go. All right. All right, so so we have fifty-six Cherry Street. It's a a long owned by the by the Stadlemans. The project that we have before you is is the building off to the right here at the corner of Cherry and Ford Street. It's primarily been used by their their electric company. They are in the process of of making changes to the interior of the building that were requested and required by the building department. And in doing so, they've realized that the the property is probably best used as a residential use as opposed to to their warehouse for their electrical company. So we've been going through tech review really for two or three years now, Madam Chair, to have this plan proposed. The existing building is going to be remodeled into thirty units. And in doing so, we wanted to divide the property into two lots. Currently, it it consists of about, I believe, it's six separate lots. We want to combine those six lots into two. The existing office building to the left of the property will remain on a on Lot A with both frontage and access from North Warren and Cherry Street. The new residential use in the existing building will be on Lot B, again with frontage and access on Cherry and North Warren. Ample parking, plenty of green spaces. You can see on the plan, if if you've ever been by the property, you can tell that the Stadlemans do a real nice job maintaining their property. They go above and beyond with landscaping and ornamentals, fences, everything else. So we're pretty happy that we're finally able to get this project off the ground, Madam Chair, and and get it before you. But with that, I think I'll allow Attorney Burke to earn his money, if I may, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Madam Chairwoman. I I I'm not gonna take too long in this. You've got still a bunch of stuff to do, but I I got the zoning in the original building for the Stadleman maybe thirty years ago. We filed and secured relief from the zoning board for the 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 structure that's under construction now that Scott mentioned. And it truly is, I think, a best reuse as residential housing. But as part of the process, it became clear that the most effective way to deal with it because of the 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 two different structures was to separate the lots. This is partially land court property, and I don't know to what degree the the board has has gotten involved in the fact that it's land court, but it it's it's taken us, it's almost two years to just get a simple removal from registered land so that we could go ahead and do the subdivision that we had talked about and had approval with with the engineering department in the city. So this is ready to go. We'd we'd like your consideration in approving it, and it's gonna be a first-class project for informational purposes that if you're interested in the process of closing on the Claff Box property on North Warren Avenue, which is, you know, roughly about a thousand feet further north, and that's where the electrical supply is going to be moving. There's roughly about seventy-nine thousand square feet, believe it or not, in that building. And they're in the process of making substantial changes and renovations, and hopefully, we're gonna close on that at the end of this month. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. I just had a question for Rob, I guess the department. Has the city engineer still not reviewed this?
I would defer to Evan on that.
Yeah, I haven't I haven't received any update review from the city engineer yet at this point. So he still will have to. I know we spoke about this in tech review, Scott, that you'll still need him to review this. And depending on what happens there, you may have to return.
Yeah, we Yeah, as part of the the new stormwater, the stormwater bylaws in the city, Madam Chair and board members, even once we get planning board approval, as part of the building process, we still have to get stormwater approval, which is granted by a by a committee, but it's headed by the by the city engineer. So we have to go through and and at that point, make sure that we satisfied him as well. So he'll he'll certainly have a another chance at at approving it, Madam Chair. But we don't, we don't foresee any issues at all. I I the one issue he had was that there was perhaps a a catch basin that was was missing, but we've walked the site with the Stadlemans who have installed everything out there. We don't see that we've missed anything. We're pretty confident in what we have on the plans and the design we have before you, Madam Chair.
All right, that's good. I was just also concerned that it's an extra step, but I guess more opportunity for you and Attorney Burke to make more money.
Thank you.
Questions from board members?
Yeah, I've got one question. On the building sides, what's the setback from the sidewalk?
I'm gonna get that answer without changing the the plans, Mr. Sweeney. Let me see, it is it's existing about six feet along Ford Street and a little bit more, about eight feet on on Cherry Street.
So six feet and eight feet off of where the city owns?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yep, and and sidewalks basically all around the property, but sidewalks on those two streets as well.
All right, so there so that green you have is a a could be a true line of green.
It in in fact, it is currently a a green space with a whole lot of shrubs out there.
Okay. Thank you.
Except for the F D C connection that has a nice concrete walk as required.
Gotcha. Thank you.
This is Deputy Williams. I actually think it's a lot less than six feet. It's probably like three feet or four feet, but definitely not six feet, but it's it's the building, the building is already there.
Yeah. All right, just curious about that. Thank you.
Okay, questions from the board members? If not, open to public?
Anyone wishing to address this project, please use the raise your hand icon at the bottom of your screen. And Madam Chair, I have no one indicating that they would wish to speak. Thank you.
Okay, is there a motion?
Motion to approve a standard conditions and with the exception of the city engineer for a final review.
All right, roll call. Excuse me, Larry?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Yolanda?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
And Tony? Yes. All right, thank you, gentlemen.
Once again, we thank the board for its time.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Hope you feel better, Madam Chair.
Thanks, it's just this lingering cough that will hang around for a little while longer until, thank you, though. Before we close, I just wanted to make a comment. I'm always going to dismiss inappropriate comments made to the board, and I will always remain respectful and courteous to applicants, presenters, and other board members, and I hope that we all do the same. We need to respect one each other's decisions. We may agree to disagree, but we should refrain from making inappropriate comments to one another or to anyone that's presenting to us. I also want to say that I have confidence in the department and the information presented to us. So if there's any issues with this soil condition, lot shape, or land topography, if that is, that's what's been presented to us, and we needed to make a decision off of this. If that's not accurate, then this needs to be changed, but I have faith in the department. And so this is how I base my decisions, and I hope that the rest of the board respects the department as well and has confidence in the information provided to us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Madam Chair, before we adjourn, do we have to come in to sign anything, or they'll let us know?
Yeah, they'll they'll let us know on the paperwork committee.
All right.
I'll let you guys know. We have one A and R, but we were still waiting for one more, so I'd rather just wait till they come in so we can get you guys all in. Also, do you guys want to sign? I'll let you guys close the hearing, but do you guys want to sign those?
Yeah. Not that, thank you for the reminder. We have it on our email, so if you could sign the attendance for this evening, that'd be great. Now we can sign it, but
Isaiah, was that your email?
It should it either came from me, Jim, or Adobe.
Adobe, Adobe sign at four eleven.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
A motion to adjourn?
Second.
Okay, roll call. Larry?
Yes.
Yolanda?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Tony? Yes. Good evening. Good night, everyone.
Good night.